This is a public meeting being a video and audio recorder for cable broadcast. And internet posting on WWW dot dyton dash mass dot gov. And if everyone please rise, pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any public input? Moving on to number five A. To review, discuss, and act if necessary on upcoming state law changes regarding tobacco regs, I assume.
Yes.
So Marilyn Edge from the Bristol Con. Tobacco coalition thingy.
Yes, all of that. Okay, so I've been making the rounds of the boards of health in my collaborative. The last time I was here, I told you that the grant was changing. So the new collaborative, we've gone from thirteen to nine communities. We had to drop Foxborough, Mansfield, Seacon, and North Attleboro. So we're down to nine communities. We're working on the lowest amount of funding we've had since two thousand eight. My inspector Sarah, that's worked for me for almost seven years at nineteen hours a week, is now working five hours a week. And but our work plan hasn't changed.
No, it does.
No, so that's me, so now it's all me now, everything is me, pretty much. So the new state law is going to go into effect December thirty first of two thousand eighteen. Your tobacco regulation went, the last one, was effective August one of two thousand thirteen. So it's a few years old already. So I'm here to tell you about the changes in the state law, to see if you want to update your regulation now. And if you do, I'll let you know how that works. So there's been a couple of changes from the current state law, which is what your reg is modeled after, to the new state law. In the current state law, it is not illegal for parents to purchase tobacco or vaping products for their own children. You can't buy products for your kid's friends, but you can purchase for your own regardless of their age. When the new state law goes into effect, that's not going to be the case. They took that provision out of the state law, thank God, for that. They made the restriction on selling tobacco and vaping.
Do you have copies of that?
Of what?
The changes?
No.
It's online now.
Is it online?
Well, the new state law is not on the research website yet, Cheryl, so it's coming.
Yeah, well, I went to DPA.
There was a DJ Wilson sent out a bulletin to all the MMA communities. So if you're, if you're on the Mass Municipal, you would have gotten the changes.
I'm gonna go.
Beginning of October, end of September.
I gotta look for that.
Probably around policy.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
No.
Can you forward that to me?
I think I have.
We still have it, yeah.
Just forward it to Rose, and I should distribute it to us.
Okay. So now the, in the new state law, there's going to be a statewide restriction on selling tobacco and vaping products in pharmacies. So that doesn't just concern Walgreens, Rite Aid, that concerns any establishment that has a pharmacy in it. So whether they're independent, and I don't think you have any here in Dyton, it will also affect Stop &amp; Shop, who has a pharmacy. And they're the biggest ones, Hanifetz has a pharmacy. So those establishments, because they have a pharmacy in the building, even though it may be an independent pharmacy, like Target's Pharmacy or CBS, but Target doesn't sell tobacco anyway, so. So those establishments are not going to be able to sell tobacco and vaping products from now on. Where up until now, it was a community by community, okay? So the next time you redo your regs, even though you don't have any, you're gonna have to put that language in there. And that will then prohibit, it'll be under state law, it'll bring your regulation up to the level of state law.
So the new, new changes in the state are not optional to communities, correct?
No. No, your, your local regulations can be stronger than state law, but not less than. So they've added the used to be cigarettes to the word for smoking law, which is a good thing, and you have that already in your regulations.
Wherever you can't vape, you can't, wherever you can't smoke, you can't vape.
You can't vape, right. And the big one is that everybody's all excited because they think that the state law changes the age to purchase tobacco to twenty-one. And it, the state law does that, but in a three-year graduated period. So they put a grandfather clause in the new state law that says anyone who turns eighteen by December thirtieth of two thousand eighteen will be able to continue to purchase tobacco products forever. So unless your community is already twenty-one with no exemptions, then when somebody goes into one of your retailers to purchase tobacco and hands them an ID, the store clerk is gonna have to be responsible for figuring out when this person turned eighteen, because the point of sale, even if they have a scanner, will tell them whether or not they turn, they're eighteen, but it won't tell them when they turned eighteen. So they're gonna have to look at the ID and figure out the math, which you wouldn't think is a big deal, except that a lot of our store owners can't figure out the eighteen when it's eighteen today. Never mind eighteen last week, but not next week, because that's what's gonna happen. So those are the changes in the state law. If you decide as a board that you want to bring your minimum legal sales age from eighteen to twenty-one with no exemptions, so that your stores don't have to deal with the grandfathering piece, then you have to make that decision. I have to get Cheryl Savara to get me the draft, which will include everything that's in your current regulation, the new language on the pharmacy ban, and the minimum legal sales age. I've gotta get that to you to review. You have to pick a public hearing date. We have to have the public hearing and have the effective date of the new regulation prior to December thirtieth. If we can't get it done by December thirtieth, you cannot change a regulation for three years. That's, that's.
But the first step is for us to vote.
Well, you have to decide whether or not you want to, to do it. I can tell you that I met with Berkeley last week and explained this whole thing, and they said to me, thank you for coming. And then I met with Fall River yesterday, City Council, and got the same response. Taunton is looking at reviewing their draft regulation to go to twenty-one on November the first Tuesday, whatever that is, in November, that's their regular meeting date. They've just appointed a third doctor to the board because Dr. Nate's passed away a couple of weeks ago. I heard they were appointing Dr. Thayer from Morton Hospital to be the third member of the board. So they're going to review their regulation, the draft, at the next meeting with the intention of going to the public hearing. Now, we've been there before with them, with this, with Taunton, and the day of the public hearing, they changed their mind. So I don't have any idea, I have no idea what's gonna happen.
Have you spoken with Swansea in Somerset?
Swansea, I spoke to the town administrator, who asked me to put all the information in an email to the health agent, Tim Turner, and ask him to bring it before the board, and I did that, and.
In Somerset?
In Somerset.
That's Tim Turner in Somerset.
Right, and now I can't even get a return email, I can't get a response, so I don't know what they're doing. Swansea has a new health agent coming on November fifth, and they wanna wait until he comes on before they'll even talk to me. So I can't even get in there to talk to them.
Kind of a short timeframe, but, no, right around the corner.
Right, so I know.
Didn't we talk about Rehoboth yet?
I don't, nobody covers Rehoboth. Rehoboth has no funded tobacco control program.
Uh-huh.
No. So New Bedford, though, got their funding in this grant cycle, they were successful in getting a new funded program. And their program, they have a new health agent, health director in New Bedford, DeMoone Chapman, who is a DPH background. And I was with him at a statewide meeting today, and his, the collaborative in New Bedford, it's New Bedford for him, Dartmouth, Freetown, Acushnet, Marion, and Rochester. And he told me that all of their communities are going to go to twenty-one at the same time. But he hasn't had Cheryl do the regulations yet, so I don't know how they're gonna work that out. But his announcement today was that they were all gonna go to twenty-one at the same time. And knowing what I know about Freetown, I found that I totally believe that they were gonna do much of anything. So we have some experience in Freetown, so.
I would be in favor of going to twenty-one. It foregoes a lot of hassle, not just, if I was a business owner, I would be in favor of it. I'm a less burdened, trying to figure out, oh gee, is it the right, you know.
So there will be, I can tell you that there will be new signage provided to all the store owners from the state. We were looking at designing that at the meeting today. And the way it looks right now, it's going to say seven eighteen on the signs that we hand out. It's just going to say that it's illegal to sell tobacco to anyone born at, before December thirtieth of two thou, oh, after, December thirtieth of two thousand eighteen, or two thousand, yeah. It was, it's very confusing.
Yeah.
If anybody born after December thirtieth of two thousand is not going to be able to purchase. That's how the signs have been read.
That is confusing.
It is confusing, yeah, because if you turn eighteen prior to December thirtieth of two thousand eighteen.
Your grandfather.
Your grandfather.
Unless, unless they adopt not.
Unless you adopt a twenty-one.
Now, that signage, when does it become available? Because right now, boards of health are sending out applications for renewals.
Yep.
And then you wanna be able to let these individuals know, and then actually give them the stuff before it first comes around. So it's all too close.
Are they clearing us? Within the last probably two days, they just took off the eighteen posters. They haven't replaced them yet, because I've been trying to find, I've been trying to find something for twenty-one, my own, you know.
I have twenty-one signs if you need them, I can bring them here and drop them off. I have some in my car, so I'll give them to you. Twenty-one that's effective now.
Correct.
Yeah, I can get those to you.
I love it.
Yeah, I can, how many do you need?
If you just had two.
Oh, jeez.
I would be happy with two. If you had like ten, I'd be tickled pink.
I would mind someone too.
The twenty-ones, well, but the new twenty-ones are gonna be different.
Okay, the new one, I'm looking for the new one.
We don't have them yet, we just designed them today in a meeting.
Sorry, so.
But the, if you, effective now, twenty-one signs, I have. I have eighteen, so now I have twenty-ones in the car, so I'll get those to you when I leave here. So that's that, so, and you don't have to make that decision today while I'm sitting here. You can talk about it and figure it out later, it's up to you.
Having been in a larger community at the time of going to a twenty-one, and saw almost no opposition to it, and actual, in favor of it by retailers, that was good. And then now, and that was before the majority of the city, you know, Massachusetts cities and towns were going to the twenty-one. Now the majority is, I'm in favor of just going to twenty-one. It eliminates a lot of the headaches and hassle, and we don't have that many retailers, it's not a big town.
Right, yeah, we have some.
I'm in, I'm in favor of it, that's, that's my.
Where you're not trying to get opposition is for your retailers that sell alcohol.
It's a big deal for them.
Yeah, that's a big deal for them. I can tell you that, speaking with the district manager for Cumberland Farms, because the new Taunton store just opened, Hartsford Corner, it's enormous, it's really, and it's a beautiful store. He told me that their point of sale computer system cannot be reconfigured to say, because it's, it will tell them they're eighteen, but it doesn't tell them when, like if they turn eighteen in time. So he said that Cumberland, he told me that Cumberland Farms is in discussions at the corporate level about having all the Cumberland Farms in Massachusetts go to twenty-one regardless of where they are, just to take that off of their employees. And I have a store in Fall River, the Supreme Gas in Fall River, who has like five stores in Fall River and two in Westport. And they have, they have corporate, they have, in Massachusetts, almost two hundred stores. He said that his employees are never going to be able to figure it out, that he's, he's contemplating making a decision across the board to go to twenty-one as a corporate business decision. And, and the stores have the right to do that, so.
I just recently pushed forward another community.
Yeah.
It didn't happen, but I'm in favor.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I'm in favor for myself, myself in, in Dyton, so.
I have two questions.
Sure.
For Mass. How long has the municipality you're referring to had the twenty-one regulation? And do you know how many Commonwealth cities and towns have adopted it?
It's been going on probably four to five years at this point.
Quite some time.
Oh, yeah.
So you would have heard backlash by now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and.
We're up to over a hundred and eighty communities that have gone, not only three fifty-one.
That's more than fifty percent.
That have gone, Norton just went, in our collaborative, Norton just went September first. Attleboro has been since January one of two thousand sixteen, they've been twenty-one. North Attleboro was as well. And Foxborough and Mansfield, which are the other two communities I had to drop, are both, were both twenty-one. And Foxborough was the first community in the collaborative to go to twenty-one.
So it seems like the trend is towards the twenty-one, so Dyton wouldn't be unique.
You know, and Jim, when, when we did it, my prior deployment, we didn't just go to twenty-one, we banned all single sales, all flavors. I mean, we went, we were very, very heavy, and I don't, we went out to every single, we had twenty-six, we banned pharmacies. We went up to all twenty-six to twenty-seven establishments and went through all the regs and what they can and couldn't sell and everything else, and we gave them the signage, and, and not one of them had a problem with it. And I think during my tenure there, after we passed it, we only ever had one person come in and complain. There was some kid who had just turned eighteen, and they were ripping that they couldn't, you know, I just turned eighteen, what do you mean I can't go buy butts? Oh, you can drive it through the road to Pembroke, you know, Pembroke, because they wouldn't pass it, so.
Yeah, I know, I know Bellingham just went, they're, they're, they go into effect November first. I, I worked with them as an independent, and it was that Bellingham and Rantham were the only two communities in that county that hadn't done it yet. So Bellingham is going as of November first. Cheryl Savara is out four nights a week, and some, communities are scrambling trying to get it done, especially if they're surrounded by, because what will happen is if the communities around you don't do it, then, and you do, then the people, the kids from those communities are gonna end up coming in to your community to, to purchase.
For somebody that's twenty, they've smoked already for a couple of years.
Right.
Now they just gotta go to the next town. That's the only bad, but like, that's, somebody that already smoked for a couple of years.
Rep Lewis, who's, who wrote the bill that is now law, we could, tried to convince him to take that grandfathering clause out, and his concern was because there's no funding for adolescent cessation. So if you're the kids who have been smoking that are now eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, you go to twenty-one, and they're gonna be on a lot, you know? And because there was no cessation money put aside, he put that grandfathering clause in for them. That was his, that was his thing. So, and I know the last time we talked about this, I'm gonna say it was you, I don't remember if it was you, but I will blame you for this, because I have a tendency to do that anyway.
My position is the same.
I can remember you saying to me, if we can get Taunton, Somerset, and Swansea to do it, then it would be a no-brainer. But you stand in the middle of Dayton five, and go five miles in any direction, and you're somewhere else. So if the surrounding communities don't do it, then your business, your customers' customers are going to go somewhere else. And then it would hurt your businesses. It was like you and I had that conversation.
Might have been Patrick.
Might have been Patrick.
Very small number. I was in that meeting, I remember.
Yeah, my, my position stays the same, since the outlined communities are not doing it, or it doesn't look like they're gonna do it, then for us to do it would drive our residents to other communities, which in turn, I know they don't make a lot of money on a pack of cigarettes, but it will hurt the retailers a certain extent. What I would be receptive to is twenty-one in three years without the progression.
Well, that's state law, that's happening.
That's state law.
That's right, that's what I was saying.
Okay.
I have another question. This is the world of studies, do we know what the percentage of smokers are that are under twenty-one?
I don't. I'm sure, I'm sure somebody does, but I, I don't.
Because that's the number that would make a difference on the retailers and all. Because those are the ones purchasing cigarettes.
It's, it's a very small number.
As I think it's mid-fuel, so it probably, although I've, I've seen your point, I'm a business owner, so anything hurts.
They're out anyway.
But what's that number?
It's, it's a three-year span that every year gets one year less of groups of people.
Yeah, so it'll, eventually the whole state will be twenty-one, but it's gonna take us three years to get there. And that's, I mean, that's completely up to you. My job is just to bring you the information.
And then our meetings are, how many meetings do we have in November, it's still the two, right?
Yeah, we have one.
We have one, it's a little tough.
Well, unless we do a special.
Make a motion and vote?
We might be having a special one if we have a, a business that we need to.
Yeah.
So when is the November, what's the, do you have it scheduled for?
The end of the month, twenty-eighth, twenty.
Give me a second.
You wanna think about it some more, or are you ready to, if you two are ready to make a decision, just go for it. Won't hit my feelings, I've been on the losing end before.
Be October twenty, sorry, November, maybe twenty-eighth, because the fourteenth meeting's more postponed.
So what was that, you have?
November twenty-eighth, right now, currently, November twenty-eighth and December twelfth.
You have to have a hearing.
Would it make a difference if I were to go and talk to a couple of businesses and say, look, hey, this is, this is what's coming down from the state? They may not even be fully aware of it.
Well, I haven't sent anything out to retailers yet.
That's what I'm saying, a lot of these retailers may not even realize.
I, I plan, I had to wait until after today's statewide meeting to get the information, to do that.
Just for clarification, so this year, after December thirty, eighteen can still buy. Next year, nineteen can buy. Is that the progression we're talking about here?
No.
Yeah, if you're already eighteen.
If you're eighteen by December thirtieth, then you're still gonna be able to buy. So you'll be able to buy from now until the rest of your life.
But if you turn eighteen on January first, you can't buy until you turn twenty-one.
Right, so, so to answer your question, yes, if you're eighteen prior to December thirtieth, you'll be nineteen next year, you'll be the first year, twenty the following year.
Yeah, you'll be able to still.
And then when it's twenty-one.
But next year, the eighteen-year-olds wanna be able to buy.
Right.
Those who are turning eighteen in two thousand nineteen.
Well, no.
Yeah, they won't.
But this is also gonna take somebody who's eighteen buying now when they turn twenty, but you have to stop and tell them.
I'm receptive to that.
But this is where the logistics are the problem, and I don't mean in the mean, is you're relying on the person selling the product to make that determination.
Right.
That, I mean, you know, we can get confused in this room, and, you know, I mean, it's, think about a teller at the, with people standing in line trying to make that decision, it's gonna be difficult, it's gonna, with the, the store in a tough position.
Well, and, and, one of the arguments, one of the arguments is gonna be, is gonna continue to be, but I'm already eighteen.
I have to go upstairs, so, good luck.
So, whether they, if they turn eighteen before the state law goes into effect on December thirty-first, then they'll still be able to buy. But anybody who turns eighteen January one or thereafter is not going to be able to buy. So this is the thing we found out today. After January first, after this regulation goes into effect December thirty-first, as the kids that we use now age out and become, where we wouldn't be able to use them in now if they turned eighteen, after Jan, if they turn eighteen after January first, we can still use them.
For the compliance.
For the compliance checks.
Yeah.
Because if they turn eighteen after January first, it's still illegal for them to buy. So we're gonna be able to send kids in there that are eighteen in February, and if they're sold to, because when somebody says, do you have an ID, and they show them an ID, and they say, oh, you're eighteen, but they weren't eighteen in time, so it's still a violation.
Could we stiffen up the fines then, I mean, if that's, we will.
What does a retailer make?
Stiffen up the fines and put the burden on the retailer.
Fifty cents, sixty cents, maybe?
They make that much.
Yeah, so you figure a ten-dollar pack of cigarettes.
They're not going in and just buying butts.
They're, the retailer gets maybe fifty, sixty cents. Then you take what's left and you divide it in half. Half of that goes to state and federal taxes, the other half goes to the tobacco manufacturing, Phil Aron's idea. So the retailer has to sell a lot of cigarettes to make any money. Yeah, so, right now, your fines are still a hundred, two hundred, three hundred on violations. You could go up to three hundred right across the board if you wanted to do that. You can't pick a number over three hundred, because a non-criminal citation ticket that we write can only go up to three hundred. You could change it so that instead of twenty-one D, non-criminal citations, we do the health order, like we did for Almeida's, who has, has they, have they ever paid that?
Jim George.
No, they haven't. But as far as I know, they're not selling at the moment and are closing.
Yeah, I wasn't in there that long ago, but they were still open.
We heard tomorrow's open.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I wanna entertain a motion to increase the smoking age in Dyton to twenty-one years old.
So move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I'm on board.
So now we have to do a regulation.
So I will get a draft regulation from Cheryl, having her add the twenty-one and the new language on the pharmacies, which is.
Doesn't matter.
For state law, right, to your regulation, I will get it to. Um, to your regulation, I will get it to Roz as soon as I can. And she can either email it out to you to review individually, we can talk about it on the twelfth, and set the public hearing date for Decem- I mean, the twenty-eighth, November twenty-eighth is the next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Set the public hearing date for December twelfth and have it effective the thirtieth.
But when do we have to run it in the paper?
Two consecutive weeks.
Before the public hearing.
Two consecutive weeks before the hearing.
Right, so that means we have to run in the paper on the twenty-eighth, which means we have to vote before.
I, I
Ten, ten days prior.
Ten, yeah.
We can all, we can all, we can all, special meeting just.
December twelfth.
December twelfth, you can run it before that.
I know, but two weeks before is the date of our meeting, so at the date of our meeting, if we decide to run it on the day of our meeting, we would have to have told because that's two days prior, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you guys can't wait till then to vote.
You, we have to decide by the twenty-sixth of November, that we wanna run it on the twenty-eighth in the paper.
I think we should have it. Special meeting. And all, and all the ones, these are tough for us, cause the conference and like that, but maybe a Thursday, just to handle if there's a couple of things that come up and maybe get back to work.
Okay, well, if we're going to do a public hearing December twelfth, I send the notices out to the retailers.
Okay.
That, that there's gonna be a public hearing, what the changes are gonna be, date and time, all of that. So if they wanna appear or send you written comment or email or whatever. Is it possible, if I send this reg, the draft reg, to Roz, can you vote via email separately?
We don't have it in our provisions to do that.
No, so you'd have to do a meeting just for that.
We could do that, we could do that, we, you know.
Looks like November seventh, we'd, we'd be allowed the first Wednesday of the month.
It would only take us five minutes.
We can meet on a Thursday perhaps to do.
If it was, you guys be back.
At six on the seventh, and I gotta be out here by six-thirty.
Yeah.
So something, keep it short.
Return page.
Will I give you enough time, I mean?
Yeah.
So we could do November eighth, which is the Thursday.
So I think the number of people that this actually will affect is extremely, extremely much.
I think it'd be a nightmare for retailers. Yeah, and then, when she's doing the compliance, it's gonna be tough. And we're gonna be in court, we've, we've actually gone to court where the person looks older than they, and now they're gonna be like, come on, look at this, you know.
The number of people.
Well, my
And every year it gets less and less, one, a whole year less, so.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna broadcast my, I will, my personal situation. But I started smoking at a young age. I quit twenty-six years ago, and I still have COPD. Damage is done at a young age, so, um, and that's probably why I went with this, so. Anyway.
Okay.
So December twelfth works, we just have to schedule a date for a special meeting. I have that time, so we can.
December twelfth is Veterans Day, oh no, November twelfth is Veterans Day, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong.
November's, yeah.
November's cemetery, it's like, just make it very short.
So Marilyn, Cheryl will be drafting the regs.
Yes.
We voted Tuesday night.
Yes, yeah, I don't do that, Cheryl does that.
But should, you'll send it to me?
Yep.
The board will vote on it at, at the decided.
Would, yep.
And then I'll notify you and you'll put the notice, no?
I notify the retailers.
We would in the paper.
Retailers, I would in the paper.
You're gonna have to put it in the paper.
So I'm looking at possible dates being Tuesday, November sixth, Wednesday, November seventh, Thursday, November eighth, Tuesday, November thirteenth, maybe the fifteenth, if we're all back from Falmouth by the, by the night of the fifteenth.
Let me see, November sixth, uh, Wednesday, Mar- uh, Wednesday night?
The Tuesday.
The seventh.
Tuesday night, I don't know, you can't do Tuesday, we talked on Wednesday the seventh, Thursday the eighth.
Tuesday.
I can't, I can't. I could do a short meeting on Wednesday the seventh, or the eighth, it's fine.
It's just a vote?
We, the, the board has to see the regulation to then vote on it, so that we can run it in the paper.
Cause what, you might as well give it to us ahead of time.
Well, we'll all be, we'll all be in Falmouth on the fourteenth. You'll vote there.
So they vote to adopt it, they vote to?
They vote that
To approve it, to approve.
To approve it to go to the public hearing.
Regulations to go.
Yeah. Well, we'd have been before, yeah.
You'll have it before.
Yeah.
Right, so the meeting won't take long, the only other thing is if we have this other commercial application that the board needs to act on, we would, I, I, I would need that in there too, so.
Same thing, yeah.
So it's gonna be more than a five minute meeting, so.
On the agenda.
So how about the eight, Thursday, the eighth?
How about me?
You wanna do a little later, Kevin?
Yeah, I, I have a class on Thursdays, can we do it a little earlier?
I can do any time after four forty-five.
The class starts at, uh, seven.
So you're gonna do five o'clock?
Yeah.
Can you agree by that?
Five o'clock.
Is the smoking one the only one that is tim- timely?
Yes.
So we can adopt the others at any time in the future.
Yes. Yes.
We're just working on the smoking.
Right, just on the youth access sales to members, that's the regulation, okay?
Okay.
All right, so you're gonna do, to review the draft for public hearing, and the public hearing will be at six on December twelfth?
Yes.
Is that how I worded on the agenda review, draft regulation for public hearing?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, we decided on November eighth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, at five.
Okay.
And December sixth is the year?
And December twelfth.
Twelve.
It's together.
Yeah, it's the same to review, discuss, and that kind of thing, same.
Right, they may all on the, on the same night, so.
Hmm, hopefully.
And then you can have the effective date anytime up until December thirtieth, which is a Sunday, so, I mean, that's completely up to you. So once we have the public hearing and the draft, the regulation is approved, everybody signs it, it's attested by the town clerk, then I get a copy of the signed attested reg, I send it to DEP, I send it to DPH, and I send it out to all of the retailers with their new signage, or I, in this case, I'll indeliberate, there's only seven, with the new signage, prior to it going into effect. So it doesn't usually, once it's signed, and I mean here, take, what does it take, a day to get your town clerk to stamp something?
Not even.
Not even.
Okay, so that is that. So this other regulation I brought, just because I want you to look at it. Roz, did you keep the copy?
Um.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is the workplace smoking law reg, and, um, right now, I want to say that you're working on, any violations would be in the state law. Right, I couldn't find a separate Dayton workplace smoking law. So in section four of this regulation, on page two, we're right by it, in section four, there's a list of options on this workplace smoking law. So, this is a complete reg, this is a, a draft of a complete reg. There are things in that section four that you can take out, um.
Oh, oh, can I add one thing?
Yes.
We had mentioned also, Sydney, you can't, where we, most schools at all, that's a part of the reg.
In the, in the new state law, they've, where the Department of Ed reg was just for public schools, the new state law encompasses all schools, public, private, parochial, vocational, no smoking on school grounds.
Okay.
So, yeah. Okay, so, there is no urgency on this, I just wanted you to look at it. Um, I would suggest, because you don't have a separate, a Dayton-specific workplace smoking law reg, that you look at this reg and consider adopting this. Um, and you can, like I said, you can, you can take things out of that, that section four is where all of the, all of your options are. Municipally-owned parks, playgrounds, beaches, if you have any, I don't know which pond lake situation is here. Um, smoking bars, which would include hookah bars, um.
Big bars?
Hmm?
Safe, big bars?
Um, big bars, but not big stores.
Right, but bars?
Bars.
Nothing, you don't have any, but.
You don't have any, no.
Cigar bars?
Cigar bars, that's just, they're considered smoking bars. Um, and putting actual footage in your buffer zone. The state law has, has always been a recommendation. It started out as a recommendation of fifteen feet, somehow it got to be a recommendation of twenty feet, buffer zone around any entrance, um, to any municipal building.
Where smoke can migrate in.
Where smoke can migrate in. But you can also do Taun- um, Dayton-specific, where it would be within twenty-five feet of any business. And that's completely.
Smoking bar, where it's, exclude private membership clubs?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want, if you wanna include private clubs, you can do that, but it's up to you.
Yeah, it's up to your workplace, if you can, I'm gonna require you work there.
There is. Private, private clubs that have a private club alcohol license, an alcohol pouring license, are exempt under the state law. So, we have DW, AMVets, all of those. They can, they can make their own decisions to be smoke-free, but under the state law, they're exempt. You have the right as a, as a board of health to include them, private clubs, in your, in your smoking workplace smoking.
I'm thinking about the employee just sitting there dying of smoke.
I don't, do you have those?
No, no, I'm just saying, as, as an employee working in a smoking bar, no, there's no smoking bars, there's.
Is there? No, no, I meant private clubs, AMVets, Knights, Columbus.
We have the young clubs.
Yeah, but it's still open to the public for meals and things like that, that's why I don't just.
Yeah. Well, but the rooms that are open to the public for events are supposed to always be smoke-free.
Smoke-free, yeah.
Yep. So usually, they allow smoking in the bar, but not in the room they rent out.
What about a private one that doesn't serve alcohol, pouring license?
Then, then it doesn't, the private club law doesn't, doesn't pertain to them.
Really?
Yeah. Because this, the, the specification is private club liquor license.
Okay.
So we had some issues years ago with, uh, AMVets or whatever it is in Somerset, where there were complaints about them allowing smoking even in their event room, when it was a member's, and yes.
Professor club?
Yeah. Them too, um. But, and that was when Eller was on the board of Falmouth in Somerset, and her husband was on the board of the club, so it was a little dicey, but.
So this one we can kind of do anytime, right?
That is no urgency to, I just, you know, think that while you're bringing your stuff up to the level of state law, that you consider doing a Dayton-specific workplace smoking.
Is it something we wanna?
Well, we're all still in a good mood.
Do you wanna, is it something you wanna review and put on the next meeting?
Well. I mean, it's, it, the most important thing, I think, and a lot of communities are now doing the parks, playgrounds, beaches, that would be, I mean, it would be board of health and police department enforced, if that's how you put it in your recommend, in, in the regulation. Um, but most of those are self-enforcing, it would be like somebody saying to you, this is sign up, you can't smoke here, you have to go sit in your car, or whatever. All of that.
Yeah, we won't get much of it.
Fight some baseball fields, that kind of stuff. So.
Is Westport in the collaborative?
Yeah. They have that.
They've seen it.
Yeah, they, they just adopted that same reg.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, they, they got Hot Snack Beach and, nothing's worse than stepping on a cigarette and just signing.
Yes. Yeah, and actually, they did their, um, they did their, what they did before they enacted.
That's a good point, nothing worse than that.
Before they enacted their regulation, and it was the new health agent, Matt Armando, wanted to put this through.
Yeah.
What he did was he went to the cemeteries department, and he went to the parks, and he went to the beaches department, because they, in Westport, they have a beaches department.
Yeah, and so get everybody's input.
And talked to them about it, before the board voted, and then when we had our public hearing, nobody showed up.
Oh, yeah? At least get their input.
Yeah, so, and they, and in this case too, I mean, there are, there, I mean, I can give you templates for signage that would have, you know, be town-specific, but I have metal twelve-by-twenty-four signs that say, there's no smoking, just like the no-smoking school ones. So, I think the most important part of, of this regulation is that buffer zone around entrances, and you can put it for municipal buildings, you can put it for any businesses. So that you go to the store and you don't have to walk through the employees standing outside smoking to get in. Because not everybody pays attention to that, twenty feet away from the door. When you go to the store.
Yeah.
Ventilation system. So, that's all I got today.
That was good.
Meeting three out of four this week. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, on this one, I think it's, you should just review it, and like you said, speak to at least some of the other disciplines involved.
Yeah.
So they don't feel like, we didn't get our input on any of this.
Right, right, and, and Matt did that, he went, he even went to the selectmen's meeting. Um, and I don't have a problem doing that, I don't know when your selecting.
Forty, ten minutes.
Is there a lot of smoking in the building?
Yeah, there are several smokers, but they usually go up to the wall at the, the track to do their.
What about people coming in? Nobody leaves butts hanging from the window, you see their stalls, and run in.
Oh, that drives me crazy.
Gas station.
Yeah.
You have a salad?
Oh.
So I went to the bakery, the guy lined it up all perfectly.
Put it on. Yeah.
The line was so long, somebody was waiting, he went back out to, took another drive, I'm like, what is this guy doing?
See if you can put it on the ground, they come back out, pick it up and smoke it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or put it in the, if they've got any, or a plant or.
Yeah, they just leave it there, let us molder and come back.
And then they come back, come back for it.
Smoke it up, huh?
So. Okay, so I'll get the draft regulation to Roz, she can email it out to you guys, and I will see you on, whenever that date was we decided, I wrote it down.
December twelfth.
December twelfth, no, November.
Oh, you're gonna come to that one too?
Yeah. If you have any questions.
That was December.
That would be the night they vote to have a public hearing.
That would be the night that they vote to have the public hearing, for it to go forward.
Yeah, December eighth at five P M, yeah.
Okay, so what I can do in the meantime is I can also do the draft letter to the retailers and get it to you, so you can put it in the packet.
Okay.
So you'll know what it's gonna say, because we vote, if you vote on the eighth, that it's gonna go forward, then I'll have to mail those on the ninth. Just to give them notice. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Brown.
So much.
You're welcome.
You'll send me some.
This is one of the, one of the easier meetings I've had this week.
Well, if you'd like, you can stay longer and get involved in some of the other stuff.
Into what? I don't know, is there anything down here I wanna know about?
Listen, Starwater sounds pretty good, yeah. Wanna talk about the lease law?
Well, I'm gonna move on to the, uh, patrol officer report.
Woodbase, woodweights, area?
It's an extra, John. Okay.
You're up, kid.
Um, well, it's been quite quiet, but I haven't been around, so, I just returned on Monday. Though I did take calls and I, you know, did what I could, uh, hold the phone. Just a heads up, deer season's upon us, we're gonna be getting a lot of deer hit by cars, so be careful um, on our streets, cause they do like to run across the streets, they don't know any better. Um, barns will be starting to be inspected, probably in a couple of weeks or so. And I think that's about it. We do, we did get approval for the extra twenty-five thousand to go with the twenty-five from the town, uh, from the state, to go towards our new shelter, which, um, we've walked through, we've got a basic plan on what we're going to do, so Which um, we've walked through, we've got a basic plan on what we're going to do, so when the police are all out of there, hopefully we can start on that relatively soon.
Nice.
And get that underway, so we'll have a new facility.
What's the process with the police station, how long are they?
I hear they're supposed to be in by December.
Wow.
But that could, you know, that can change, so I'm hoping by the first year, we can start working on the new shelter and get that going.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Did you have a good vacation?
I did.
Do you have a report you wanna do? Are you ready?
Um.
Other than uh not Titan.
I don't have a folder for you as reports, sorry.
Do you have an agenda that I have to look at, you know, isn't that what we're talking about?
Um, yeah, but I don't think I, I can still set that in your desk, sorry. Yeah, we better wait on that.
I'm gonna go to uh five. F, which is to review discussion at MH, MAHB certificate program. Uh, which will be held in Tonon on November tenth, which is the closest to us. I know you and I generally go and uh.
In case?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, just in case, so there's no.
I haven't decided yet if I'm going to this one, because I go on to the one down there on the fourth, well, whatever that Thursday is. So um, I'm still making a decision on this, but.
You gonna go through that town?
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Do you wanna go?
I don't know, does the board want me to go?
Yeah, I like, this one's a good one, I like that.
It's a little.
It's a Saturday.
I don't know what it is, so I'm kinda relying on you guys to tell me what you want me to be doing.
There's, there's several different uh.
What's the date?
November tenth.
Oh yeah, there it is, it's on the.
There's a bunch of tracks, they, they different every year.
Go on the MAHB website.
I'm gonna be in Maine that weekend.
Okay.
If there's any more fun. I don't think I make it, so.
Yeah, if I decide to go and register myself, Roz.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know, I'm not sure Matt's going, but he probably goes with his town too, so, um.
So I probably should post it as a meeting.
Yeah, just in case, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Well, let's talk about the, it's, I don't think we need Matt for this one either. Um, not Titan health concern.
You don't have your folder?
No, no, it's on a folder, I just was turning to Stacy, cause she was part of it before she left on her vacation. Uh, we have one site where there's some brush and debris and some sawdust that were asked them to remove. They're cooperating and they are gonna remove it, but uh, it was decided that we set traps um and bait. Before they remove it, cause if we remove it, the rats are just gonna go somewhere else, so um Stacy has set traps and bait and um. Any day now, we're probably gonna remove an app. Uh, we did have a complaint from someone down the end of Chase Road that they were seeing a rat in their. Front shrubs and, and, and that kinda thing, and um, Tom and I went out and looked at it and um. We couldn't find evidence of habitation or whatever, you know, like no holes or anything like that, so, but we looked all around the yard. And we didn't see anything there, but we're getting these random complaints here and there about, yeah, I see a rat here, or I see a rat there, or somebody killed a rat. Well, this one particular house, yeah, the, the, the dog food was out on the front step.
So now, we just encourage them to, that's a no-no, okay?
Yep, but it's same as everywhere else, it's like this ghost, you know, you, you hear about it and then you get there and it's not there, you know, so. Um, we're still trying to chase it down, we've got another location that we might be looking at, um, that we think they might be traveling to the storm drains potentially. So we may have to, we only looked in sewer lines, but now we're gonna start looking in some storm drains, so.
Yeah, we're all done, we table everything. Okay.
So I probably go for that.
That's all you got?
For that, yeah.
You wanna report later or?
I'll report later.
Okay. Okay, we can go back up to uh five B, I guess. Listen, Stonewater discharge regulation fines. I understand that we need to get this done for tomorrow, is that true? It's on the Stonewater agenda?
It's on the Stonewater agenda, but the same thing, we've been so busy that it needs to be tabled, it will be tabled.
So, this is um, we've, we've kicked this around before, the illegal discharges into. Either onto a sidewalk, onto a public way, into a catch space and that kinda thing, and um. The, the, the plan is that we try and eliminate as many of these as possible, we don't want some people, some pumps discharging on the street and icing up. Uh, we don't want them dumping them onto the neighbor's yard, that kinda thing, so that's what this regulation is intended to um. Prevent and correct, and so the issue is if somebody starts doing that, that we come up with some kinda fines. Associated with it, cause otherwise the regulation without any teeth, so um. This, what you're seeing here in front of you is I think what I came up with, um, we haven't really talked about it as a Stonewater committee yet for fines, um. So these are just my ideas, so um, this is as far as we got, as I wrote a few things down. Oh, oh, you guys haven't followed it? Seen it yet, I wrote down a daily fine if it was just water, maybe like three hundred dollars a day for the first day and sixty-five dollars each additional day. If it was another liquid. Um, oh yeah, if it was another liquid, like oil or something like that, then make it a five hundred dollar fine or something.
That's got the D E P involved and everything else.
Well, right, but then maybe we don't even get into that and we just turn it over.
Oh yeah, they all, they have their fines, they're on that, you don't wanna be involved. What if we filed the twenty-one D?
Well, what if it was?
What's the fine on that one? The, the, two hundred, hundred, two hundred, three hundred, right? Yeah, that's fine.
Stay with that.
Cause you could just say, if it's a some pump, you say, hey, listen, I don't have to, we don't wanna fine you. Can you move this into the center of your yard and not discharge right on the road, you're causing a nuisance, a lot of times they comply. If they fail to comply, then you say, I don't wanna cite you, but if you, if I have to, I have to.
Yeah, I think the first time's gotta be a warning or.
Yeah, well, you're just trying to, you're trying to work it out right then and there, if they can't divert this water somehow. Or control, I know some people have some pumps and they, they have to get rid of somehow, but you gotta put it more on your property and not cause a nuisance on the road. So if there's nothing they can do, really, you have to, if they're not gonna comply with you, then what else you have, there's the alternative, so. Just file the non-criminal disposition of our regular fine schedule, one hundred, two hundred.
Makes sense.
I think.
But what if it's a some pump that they throw out there and I tell them today, stop, and they decide not to stop, and they just leave it there for the rest of the winter? Is each day, like, is it?
Be one hundred, two hundred, three hundred every day thereafter?
Three hundred every day thereafter.
Each day constitutes a violation.
If you can't see, if you can't get compliance, and then sometimes like on that ki- those cases, they're not even gonna pay those fines. You seek compliance through the courts, you take it to court.
I would, you just would have to put in there uh subject of twenty-one D citation structure or something.
Yeah, non-criminal disposition.
Is that what it's twenty-one D?
Yep, with uh new violation of crimes every twenty-four hours or something like that.
Something should be written on that twenty-one D.
Something each day, yeah, if, if it's not already, just that way it covers.
If you're looking at bylaws, what, it, it says in the twenty-one D.
What was that again, sorry?
Just that.
Twenty-one D, non-criminal disposition.
Uh, fine ticket structure.
And, but you were saying with the daily.
With the new, the uh. Violation will be considered, a new violation will be considered, um.
Do you have it up there on the thing, the bylaws?
Each, each day or something.
You give, which bylaws?
Each day of non-compliance will constitute a new violation.
Yeah, but which Dayton, which one are you talking about now?
General bylaws, twenty-one D, non-criminal disposition. But that's perfect, the way you just said that.
And where would that be on?
And each day is constitute a new.
That's what it says. There you go.
Because on the, on the non-criminal dispositions, not, not just our office can cite that, it could be the police department.
Correct.
Depending on what it is, you know?
Building, highway, whoever. Whoever sees it, you know, it's not like, oh, only Todd can be around to write it, but. It's kinda the catch-all.
Tunnel with conservation rights, well, you're saying we have it on that.
Maybe it'll be just done a while else.
That's, that's a good wording though, one hundred, two hundred, three, a regular fine.
Sorry, you get, you get some, it doesn't know, you know what I mean? You know, black comes.
You see it, uh, with mostly the sub pumps, if it's a problem in the basement.
Especially come March.
Sometimes it's more on record.
Hmm, yeah.
You wanna give them um so many days to correct it?
Well, that's the uh, that's, that's part of it.
I think we have some people that run underground right out to the road.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, on, on something that's causing ice on the road, it should be like immediately.
Right, but if you have, you know, a, a plan and.
Things of non-compliance, I mean, to me, compliance is, we didn't know, we're sorry. You know, it's gonna take us five days to get this corrected.
Yeah.
We're gonna actively work on it, we'll give you a plan, and maybe it rains on day three, okay, it's gonna take a six day, as long as they're actively correcting it. In an acceptable timeframe.
You're working with the person, but when you're ignored.
Yeah, and then you don't, somebody likes, yeah, and so, that's when you say, okay.
Yeah, reasonable amount of time.
That's a reasonable.
They need to give us a timeline, like, that would be part of the.
Right, right.
Like a plan for how they're gonna mitigate it in the timeline.
Okay, I need two weekends to get this done, I gotta call my, call my, let me get back to you in a couple hours.
See if they're actually, you go back and they, they're already digging it up, moving it around, alright, I'll see you tomorrow, yeah?
I mean, a year is not a reasonable amount of time, I'm sorry.
But they may need a permit from Conservation Commission or something like that, or, right, they may.
Which I wouldn't be fine on if they're waiting for conservation to.
Cause that can drag on, um.
The ones that I've seen have plenty of yard space to.
Repave it.
Yeah, send it out to the yard.
Well, I was gonna send them down to Kevin, but he didn't bring anybody anything when he went to Dunkin' Donuts, so I don't know if we should share.
What do you got in there? I've been eyeing it.
Nothing for you.
It's taken like half a coffee.
That's nice, you didn't bring anything.
Cookies, no.
Rice Krispies, squares.
Peanut butter.
Dinner. I don't see it in here, guys, sorry, it's somewhere above.
I'll see if I can find it and uh, I'm looking for it now, then we'll, I'll, we'll.
We can tweak this.
Yeah.
So we have something we can, we can report to the Stonewater Committee tomorrow that we're discussing it and we're gonna add in stuff for this kinda thing and.
And then what Tom, what Tom says is perfect, just each, if there's a fine, reg- a regular, you just make sure you indicate twenty-one D, non-criminal disposition. And any new fine is subject to checks and.
So I think we might have one over there.
A new violation subject to exactly what you said, violation.
You got general bylaws.
I can't remember. I have to go back and get.
Page fifteen.
I'll have it here in a moment for you. I don't know where it is. Alright.
You got it?
Oh yeah.
Alright, here we go, listen, listen up. Oh, you have it, right? Yeah, I've been looking for.
Did you want one, Kevin?
Yes, your first violation's written warning, so it'd be like day one, hey. Figure this out, right? Second is two hundred, third is. Third violation's two hundred, and fourth in additionals, three hundred. Oh, it says right here, each day on which a violation exists shall be deemed to be a separate offense.
Yeah, that's a lot shorter than what I said.
Separate offense.
But if you just referenced twenty-one D.
Yeah, because again, the, the agents working with the, whoever goes out there, is working with this individual, obviously, they're trying to correct it, then we'll ch- we'll correct it.
Uh, Dayton, general bylaws, it's right there, article.
But if it continues to be a nuisance and nothing's happening, then it can be a separate fine.
Bylaws, page fifteen.
Alright. We're gonna move on.
Do you need to vote on this? No, cause we're not acting on anything right now, um, right now, we're just, I guess, tabling it while we work on the language, but we have something we can report to Stonewater Committee meeting tomorrow, so.
They get finalized, we'll act on it.
Yeah.
Okay, next item, uh, five C. Review discussion act sanitation facilities regulation.
That was yours, you need to have the handicap part of it, oh, actually, one too.
Really?
Yeah.
You can do it?
Great, yeah. So the top one Matt sent and the one behind it, Tom Pires wanted you guys to look at it and see if there was any parts of that that you wanna add.
OSHA has read Sue on this, you know?
Since seventy-one. This is um, quite elaborate, yeah, it's quite elaborate though.
Mm-hmm, it is, yes.
I don't know if we wanna get that elaborate, but I understand a lot is nec- a lot is necessary, but.
Need to ensure that they have some, some type of hand sanitizer. I guess most do though, but.
I, I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I just found this today, I threw it in here, there's anything, it was. It was so elaborate that I thought we might be able to pick one or two things out of it that may why I.
The only things that I was um, interested in would be that we had discussed, well, we talked about hand washing already, but we talked about a urinal in the thing. Or a han- or a handicap one, so it's a matter of if there's only one porta potty, it needs to be handicap. If you have a second one, that one must have a urinal in it, or something along those lines, um.
Well, I asked this last time, appears they don't put urinals in handicap porta jones.
Well, the handicapped is, if it's like a, say you're building a new house or something. Generally, you're not gonna have handicap, if it does, then it falls under ADA, so, um.
But the contractor doing the site work would know that he has a worker that would need that, I would think, so.
Otherwise, they can go and complain to the state and it'll be out of business before you know it, so. Um, I do like the hand sanitizer though.
Yeah, you can write on, he uh, the facility will be well maintained, properly maintained. Well supplied, properly supplied and shall not cause a nuisance to a body properly.
So serviced, supplied and maintained?
Yeah, prop- yeah, properly serviced, maintained and well supplied, and supplied, yeah. Well, the only time we've used the, the one that was handicapped is, there was a, there was an establishment that was. Fixing their bathrooms and they had a unit outside, but this thing was a monster, had to. This was for everyone. And even for, maybe you could do that for upstairs and uh, or something like that, yeah.
Well, yeah, when we also want a hand washing facility, not just hand sanitizer, I would think. If we're gonna have five porta potties lined up next to each other, I would think your hand washing station would be.
So I would say, we can include, include an F and say, uh. Hand sanitizer shall be, um. Supplied with all uh, temporary sanitation facilities. Hand washing facilities must be supplied with, I think I just saw something in there. Hand washing facilities must be supplied with, I think I just saw something in here, I'm not, that said really good.
At the couch hip, where they have the hand wash station, right?
Yeah, uh, if it's.
That would great.
Anything to do with. It's probably the only one in the co- I guess the power, no? If they can't, if they had it.
Yeah, but I think they just have like one, they don't have like them lined up.
If this regulation. That's insane.
There you go.
Oh, oh.
There it is, it's um, E six, it's like third page, second page from the end.
There you go, yep, so, I would maybe incorporate that. Oh, he's there.
So that would be G, would become the E.
Yeah.
C, E six.
So F would be hand sanitizer, you know, mo- I think almost all of them have a little thing mounted right on there now.
Yeah.
But that's just.
But then that would cover.
Jural or whatever, so.
Couch chip or any other.
And and somewhere should be stated temporary only.
For for temporary sanitation facilities regulation, then, is that what you're thinking, or you're saying somewhere near it should say it's only for temporary work?
Yeah, for like, for a food establishment, makes it sound like, it sounds like you're gonna use it, it's gonna be for a temporary food establishment.
Oh, for a.
Consumption of food for a temporary food service permit?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Cause I think that would be a temporary.
We don't want nobody to think, oh, I could just put a porta potty, no, you can't.
That's a.
You're gonna operate more than a couple of days.
To word. Did I send this to you in word or?
Um.
If you don't have a word, I'll send it to you in word.
Okay, that would be great. Cause we have to actually have this.
Didn't we wanna add construction sites?
Any project or outdoor, yes, or any project?
Oh, project, we'll call it, yeah.
Okay, keep hold of general.
Do we wanna say it's easily and easily accessible? I mean, generally, uh, but.
So you could make it from C, they show you mean on site filtration, and be easily accessible?
Yeah, or the project or outdoor fair, be easily accessible, believe it or not, that's a no sure requirement.
And what about off the road, ten feet off the road? Does it say anything about that? You don't wanna write on the F, probably.
I wouldn't want some crazy person driving down the road and.
They should be in the person's property, at least ten feet or more, not on town for layout, and they get knocked off.
Or left, shall not cause a nuisance, cause I don't wanna get into setbacks and.
Yeah, that's a lot of.
Well, we could just say, yeah, like they got number one here in E E, it says non-screen portable, but it should be located at least eight feet from any property line.
Oh, is that what it says?
Or maybe ten.
Ten feet? So now it's on theirs, not on the town layout.
We could add that right into E.
Yeah.
I would say the sanitary facility shall be no, uh, shall shall be a a minimum of ten feet from any property line, and shall not cause a nuisance to a body of property.
And shall not cause a nuisance to a burning properties.
Yeah.
You could put that right in E.
Right.
Yeah.
And from any property line.
Correct.
Yeah.
Should I say property or street line?
I don't know.
Cause you don't wanna like.
Most street would be town.
I could just say one neighborhood, the other neighborhood, put on two feet from their property line, stinking.
Oh, then it's a nuisance.
Yeah, it's a nuisance, but get this thing away from my property line, at least it's ten feet away.
I'd be forced to tip it over.
Problem.
That's something you do.
That way.
That's weird.
Not this way.
Also.
That's it, isn't it?
You got it?
No, I don't think so.
Is that the last one?
So we added a.
I think we got.
Oh, that was the last one, wasn't it?
Mm.
Um.
Thank goodness for recording, see, you can always go back.
So I just finished pointing to go, we can go on, and it's the next meeting, and then.
Yeah, yeah, we'll wrap it, we'll be back in.
Probably be hearing for, we can all at once.
We're gonna have a lot of hearings in one night.
That said, that we just close them like we did last time, you read them, close them?
Yeah, most of this stuff has gone in the seventh, but we'll have a little, on the title five, we may have a few arguments, but, you know. Can we go to five D, are we ready?
Ready.
Yep.
We will discuss an act on filing fee for hearings and variances.
No, we tabled the last time, cause we haven't gotten around to doing anything with it yet. And we haven't done anything with it in the last two weeks. Table it again. I would just like to see it tabled, but.
Motion table to the next meeting.
Hash it out, you can hash it out right now.
Second. Motion been made in second to table item five D, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
I, I know you guys are busy.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to five E, we view to discuss an act, household hazardous waste collection day.
Okay, Todd asked me to put this together, um, normally, we have a collection every few years.
Correct.
We've had many people calling, um, a few a week, not a lot, but quite a few. So, we still have money left in the budget from last year's, it's only two thousand, mid two thousand, twenty-three hundred, twenty.
Two thousand, three hundred and nine fifty cents.
Thank you. So, what we were thinking was, between the discussions we've had in Stormwater, that we want to keep, keep these hazardous chemicals, we weren't sure if maybe the selectmen might add to our budget, so that we could have one more often. You know, if you guys wanted to consider, I do have what was, um.
Every year is a lot of money.
How much was the?
In this.
It would be nice.
You have it, you flip the.
If we could get it on my town.
It was my take on this, which is one of the reasons, I went with two years, the average setup fee is between two and five thousand dollars, uh, for them to come, uh, if it would be worthwhile, and we paid a two thousand setup dol- setup fee, and, you know, and people came, but to, you know, granted, we've had fifteen, twenty calls, if that, um, you know, we couldn't get it together until after winter anyway, so now we're into spring, and we're coming up to twenty nineteen, which would be when we'd wanna have it again anyway. It it's a bunch of money to have it every year for, unless we hooked up with another.
Yeah, so we could do it in spring, maybe over the winter, put a few of those out to one of the surrounding towns, whether it be Berkeley Somerset, Swansea, or over Hope Bay, and see if one of them, because then you at least you're splitting the cost of the setup fee, so instead of four thousand, it's only costing us two thousand, um.
Okay, that makes sense.
I know, I know it's either spring or fall, because you get people doing their big spring payments, and they they have a lot, so, um, there's no way we would get one in for the fall now anyway, cause I know steroids, because they're gonna wind up being by far the cheapest, I can tell you right now, and they're, they're long booked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can. Yeah, we can ask tomorrow if they wanna try to have one in spring, but we're gonna need some of that money unless we, you know.
Meaning in the Stormwater meeting.
Yeah.
And we have two thousand, three hundred dollars, huh?
Yeah, and that's what was left from the last budget.
Yeah, when we put a bid out, we asked for the minimum setup fee, there's a cheap one here, though. Uh, D twenty-five. What year was that, though?
It was like two thousand forty.
Twenty-ten.
So, this very cycle is nine hundred for the setup fee. But you get the, I mean, the costs. So, they don't go with per pound or per gallon, it's full car, half car, so, you're getting charged, you know, so last fall, just for comparison, you've had, what, fifteen calls, twenty calls, so last fall, there were eighty-eight people that came with a full car load, and that's forty-seven dollars a load, and thirty-three people that came with a half car load, and that's twenty-nine dollars a load. And then you have your propane cylinders and all like that, which are all extra, too, so.
Uh, we didn't.
The setup fee isn't crazy, but it it's the the cost of disposal that's.
We didn't charge last year, maybe we charged ten dollars.
No, we didn't.
Maybe we could charge a little bit, and uh, work it out with the town accountant, where that money would rec- would be refunded back to that line item, could that happen? So it doesn't go to the general fund?
Well, this this has been rolled over anyway, well, this started out at nine thousand, and we rolled over the balance, and we're down to twenty-three hundred, cause last year was what, only sixty-eight?
Yeah. So.
A little over five thousand, and that was just with the disposal product. Actually, when this, since that was.
Just saying, something cheap, where the car comes in, and um, we 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 wanna use the money, we're not gonna just.
Well, we'll roll it over again until that new fiscal year, and if, and if we have it after July.
Yeah. We don't wanna wait that long. Oh, yeah, we, I guess we could do it in the fall instead.
If we have it July first, after the budget, town meeting.
Early summer.
New fiscal year.
We do right now, right after.
It's only six months away.
We see what we have in the budget at the end of the year in June.
Yeah, it'll still be the twenty-three hundred, we'll just have to fund it some more. So my bottom line is, I think we should wait, but.
You're already in almost November.
Oh, yeah, I I mean, at this point.
Right, it's already this far, you're probably right, if we're gonna wait till June, probably the fall is better, everybody's on vacation and not really thinking about that come summer, it's warmer.
We don't do them every year, we haven't done them every year, so I don't, you know, um, maybe put a request for, if it's out in January and.
Yeah, do you know when the uh, where we're at with the paint stewardship, either one here? Where the states at with that? I thought that was moving right along, and you could bring your paint back to the retailer, like your oil.
Well, latex, you can get rid of in the trash, it's just oil based stains, um.
Yeah. Well, the person who has oil can bring it back to where they.
Absolutely.
Any person that sells oil.
You're talking motor oil?
Motor oil, yeah.
Most, most.
So if they have it in a five gallon jug, they can bring it back?
True.
Yeah, I'll say, why not?
I would call first, just load it up in the cup, and they cut the fine out, we don't take that. But the 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 latex, you just dry it out, and you put it with, put it with your trash.
Oh, yeah, that I tell people, it's more.
Motor oil?
No, the uh, the latex.
Oh, latex paint, yeah, yeah, that's the way it is here, too.
That's simple, yeah?
Okay.
But, yeah, it's either, instead of doing it right at the spring.
Yeah, we learned our lesson with latex paint in two thousand ten, when it costs us fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Wow.
So.
We had a pretty good turnout this last.
But, we hadn't had one for ten years.
That's.
Two thousand to two thousand ten.
Yeah.
So.
So, I would, um, I'd make a motion that we table this until January, at which point then, we can discuss the time and re- put a request for a bid out.
Second.
Motion being second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay.
And in the meantime, if anybody else calls, just tell them that we haven't done them every year, and we just had them last year, but we are discussing having one at some point for the next year.
Definitely nineteen.
Okay.
I'll hold on to your stuff, unless you can get rid of it properly.
Yeah. Put in the shed or something for now. That's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next.
Uh, five G, we will discuss an act of recycling violations ad.
Got a couple of different ones here, Kev sent me one, um, Peter Borges brought a few in.
Did I miss one?
We already talked to you.
Oh, yes, when you stepped out for a second with Marilyn.
You covered four minutes.
Wasn't a lot, Tom.
Coming from you?
Tom.
Unbelievable.
Which one was it?
Tom said he's going, Todd said he's gonna be away, but we were wondering if you were going.
Disappointed. I, uh, it's the tenth and twelfth?
Yeah, he's on.
I might.
I might.
So they're just gonna post it as a public meeting case.
All right.
So I'm gonna be a main.
Anytime we beat up, we'll have.
You go with right now, no, or that, doesn't matter, probably good thing.
Okay, so this is what we have.
What's going on upstairs?
I'm gonna post his meeting, so you guys.
It's like two five o'clock outside.
Let's go to M H B website and see.
Yeah.
Oh, for me to, to register, you mean?
Get interested in any of it. Yeah, okay, I'll figure, I'll, I'll figure it out.
So Borges brought some tags, um, Kev sent one that, um, his town uses.
Well, I like to reject it.
So, actually, there's three that have people, wanna give one to Kev, it's it's almost the one you have, um.
Yeah, actually, that was Freetown using, the the picture one.
Yep, there's three of them.
That's that one?
Nope, different. This one for each of you there.
The one that says rejected on it.
Rejected.
It is, right.
Do they pretty much all have the same items on it?
Yeah.
Sorry, we couldn't not pick up either.
What Peter said his guys do is they have a Sharpie, and they just like cross off, or they'll put a note, and I'm like, they actually.
Sounds like this one that was on.
To uptake the time to do that, I find that hard to.
Yeah, a checker would be so easy.
Right thing.
Container not rinsed, this is for recyclers, food waste in trash bin, ceramics, plate, glass, mirrors.
Although we should say we didn't pick it up for the following reason, right?
That was rejected.
Now, the, my question is, they put that on the outside of the barrel, is it gonna make a mess of the barrel, you know, when you take the sticky thing back off, and the glue's there, and that's.
You gotta secure it on something somehow.
Do they just put it inside, like on top of the rejected stuff, like?
It would just blow away, I would just stick it right on to whatever's rejected.
I know.
You know? Well, they're not gonna take any of it.
Oh, they can actually put it, I can't, just hang it on the corner or something, like a buried on the corner of the bin?
Yeah, you slap the hole, and then you just tack right on the top.
Yeah.
Oh.
It'll still stay there, like, I can hear it already, oh, you put the sticker on, like a tiny words.
I have glue, I have glue all over my grill.
You get your chocolate.
Well, you had tomato sauce over your bit.
But we do need something like that, cause it's every week of the month.
You like the, you like the rejected?
I like rejected.
Yeah, and then as long as it covers, I guess the main thing is, is it cover every thing that could happen out.
You got your technical. Obviously.
Well, we're now gonna have textiles picked up also, so that should alleviate a lot of those items.
Oh, you can write other.
Would you say ceramic, um, pots, pans, uh, there was something on there that I noticed.
That's good, though, cause if they still put it in there, and it's not picked up for that reason, it should go in the other bags.
Well, that's probably a whole nother thing in arms.
I like.
Half of this stuff.
I like this, but.
Over to the test, uh, pots, pans.
Maybe send a comment section, rejected, move that to the top, I like this, but this exactly, just throw rejected on there instead.
So where it says town of, we don't even need that, we could just put rejected, they know what town it is.
Clearly. It's in Dyton, right?
So we could just put rejected at the top.
If he's charging us by the word, I guess. If he's not charging us by the word.
I don't think you need any comment section, so, you could just move everything down a little bit, just rejected.
It actually covers mostly that, doesn't it?
I think that that covers things a lot better than some of the other ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you can actually write a comment if you wanted to.
And Borges is already using those in Freetown, right, is that what that says?
Yeah, I like that one.
Well, he's not there, well, this was an old one of Freetown.
Right, but they're, Borges is used to that angle already, so, it's not a learning curve for that.
Yeah, it is true, yeah, so if it, that's even like. That's a good idea, if he's already used to using those in the past.
Makes it easy for Borges, makes it nice for us.
So we could either.